No, um, well, so I heard from Haley that he lost his job.
Oh, my God, I heard something like that.
Yeah.
Why?
I, I think he could have been doing funny tasks with people for a long time. Where they're pitching it slowly off. So Haley had told me that I didn't tell him that she told me that.
How did she know?
Oh, uh, because they, 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 they're, they're in touch. They saw each other and, uh.
Was it funny that, wow?
Oh, there was one person in particular who really didn't like him.
Uh huh.
That he's been talking about for a long time. I, I, I saw it. Probably that's about six months.
So he.
Yes. Yeah, that's right. So he called me while you were on. But after, this sounds terrible. Don't judge me, but. Called me while we're not, but after I thought. Oh, anyway. Oh, yeah, no, so I didn't, I didn't. Answer this call. I didn't return it, so I started being a little guilty. I finished a major section. But I abolished after.
So let's see in good spirits.
Finished a reading of Dick. With Dick Barnes.
They read it down?
Dick is, Dick is, it's all with that.
Man, he just loved that whole narrative.
Yes, yeah.
Nineties century.
Oh, like he was built for it. I think that's part of why he and I. Were drawn to so many of the same books. Heroes. Reached a little breaking point. It's, it makes, I don't have to read anything, but do again.
Do you read anything?
He said that's boring.
Wow.
It's like, I don't, I don't, I like the way you approach literature. You're too moralizing, you're too automatic, and I just don't find it entertaining. And this is Corey reporting on Nick's set. Like, you think, you know, things, you know, treat literature as something that might educate you, just treat it as like father.
Man, that is, that's a problem. He already is.
Corey.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds beautiful, beautiful, how it's worked. Are you trying to note about, uh, her? Yeah, you should. There's a website. That these, or over sound like, it's, I guess it's a website. That's about email empowerment, but also dating. So, not exactly what it's. But he said the level of support on it, especially upon it. About people who would not have voted by. Supporting colleague of us to respond.
Why should that be?
I don't know. I think that part of it is like the client letters.
I expect for me that. I'll talk to him. I would say not change.
Or, or without, uh, the fact of the working appearance. Of, on the basis of the most mediocrity superficial. Well. You know. For a lot of sensible people. Including Corey. Is like the. It's really hard to see how the public sphere now is. So those people that he fought against who were like, I don't like the two parties that go into this, I'm just gonna vote in. It's like Elias will vote in. So maybe going short that narcissistic, capital logical. Higher, this is the problem. And made life worse for you. So he knows, Corey knows. It's so good to see. It's one of the things that I actually. And surprised about. And, uh, he actually. One of the fallouts was meeting Paul. What the result of the 2021.
Hey, when you guys that are, uh, on right now, your mute is, is, uh, not on.
We're just like sending a note to everybody.
So you might want to turn off your sound.
Uh, good, it was like, thank God.
And was solid ass.
And Paul was like. Yeah, stupid, status quo. Corey was like, uh, okay, we just like probably protected civil rights and like, hopefully.
Shame on Paul.
Oh, no, Paul is like, I, I see, I, I, oh. Politics for Paul. It's like he thinks that the system should run down. And we should start to back up. But it's like, what does that look like? Who's in control? And how would that work? In Russia during the communist war in Afghanistan. Like, what, what, our overview?
It's just really cruel of him to do that, but I guess. Friend like that who's reaching out in solidarity. That's. That's nasty. Did anyone check him on that? Good, what'd she say?
I don't know.
That's one of the reasons she dislikes. Candace, your, uh, mute is not on. We've been hearing your conversation.
She just cried.
Oh, are you serious?
No, 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 they.
I didn't know I was hooked up to this. Where are we?
Can you see your Zoom screen, Candace?
No, I can't. What time, what time is this supposed to start?
Six.
Yeah, there's a lot of people here. I see it.
Okay.
But I don't see you.
Uh, I don't have my camera on quite yet. We have a thunderstorm here. I'm worried about my service.
Yeah, I, I'm here too.
Danu, can you hear us?
Yeah, I sure can. And then actually, actually, my, uh, Zoom just let me in.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, we can see and hear you.
Okay, great. Julian, are you still out of town?
No, I'm back in town. I got back yesterday.
Oh, okay, good. I hope things worked out.
Thanks.
All right, Jillian, um, Danu told me that you're from Ohio.
Yeah, I'm from Marietta, Ohio, southeast.
You're from Marietta. All right. I had a good friend from high school that went to college in Marietta. I'm from Akron.
Oh, cool. Did your good friend play baseball?
He did.
Okay, yeah, they have a great baseball program.
Yeah, he did as well. Um, I actually have no idea how old you are, but I think he's probably a bit older. Um, he would have graduated in ninety-nine.
Just a little bit older.
Little bit, okay, yeah. Yeah, he went there, he played baseball, and now he's a professor, I think, of journalism at, um, Ohio State.
Oh, that's awesome. Very cool.
And I got the heck out of Ohio and didn't look back.
Uh, as did I.
Right on. It's a good, it's a good, it's a good place to come from.
I agree.
Candace is from Ohio too.
Where in Ohio, Candace?
Um, east of Cleveland, Mentor.
Oh, you're from Mentor, right on. My mom is from the west side. She grew up in Westlake.
Oh, okay, I've been to West, Westlake. Westside's very nice. Four, five, six. Okay, folks, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Colin and, uh, and Anthony aren't going to be able to join us tonight. Uh, Colin actually just sent me an email, uh, telling me that, uh, his work scheduled, a class that he has to teach on our Monday nights when we have Parab. So he's gonna be out for the rest of this year. Uh, so I, I, but he wants to come back in, in, in January, so I need to kind of do a little, uh, research to find out protocol with all that.
So this, I, would this be part of the reason why we have alternates? And aside from Jan, do we have an open alternate position?
Uh, yeah, actually, we do. Actually, Candace is another alternate. Um, so we, we do have another, uh, alternate opening. I mean, possibly, maybe we could have Colin switch to.
Maybe Colin, I wonder if we could, could we do that? Can we?
Maybe.
Make a trade?
Yeah, it might be a way to, for him to be able to still stay on the board, but I need.
I'm gonna keep going with the baseball, with the baseball, uh, topic that, um, uh, that we kind of got on here for a moment. It'd be like kind of going from the minors to the majors. No, nobody else going with that?
I don't know, over my head, over my head too. But anyway, let me, okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order on August fifth. Sorry, twenty twenty-four. And if, uh, anyone's ready to make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll take that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Second, thanks, Jim. Uh, all in favor?
Who's, who, who seconded it?
Uh, Chan Johnson.
Okay.
Yeah, is all, all approved? Does anybody? Okay, yeah, if anybody, uh, doesn't approve. Okay, agenda passes. Okay, we have our approval of minutes, the draft minutes from June third, twenty twenty-four. And I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
All motion. It's Rebecca.
Okay, thanks, Rebecca. Second. Jan seconds. Yeah, Jan seconds. Okay, great, thanks. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, draft minutes from June third approved. Uh, item two, draft minutes from July eighth, Parab special budget retreat. Motion to approve. Jan, thank you. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, great, Tim. Uh, is anybody opposed? Okay, then I'll, I'll take it that everybody approves the draft minutes from July eighth. Do we have any public comments not on the agenda? Nope. Okay, and then, um, tonight we have, uh, Robin Bartling and Mia Requins here to present their Manitou Overlook Park, Higginbotham Flats, the, uh, the draft, the drawings that they put together and to just kind of, uh, kick us off, uh, for our first kickoff meeting.
Hey, yeah, we're excited to get started on this project. Today's really just a kickoff for the project. Um, and we are gonna share, we did a couple concepts with that proposal that we submitted, but again, that was aside from the site visit, the proposal, a little bit in a vacuum, so we want to, um, get some thoughts on that, but ultimately our goal is that we'll be developing some fresh concepts through this process. So, um.
I can share my screen. Yeah, we put together an agenda that you should have gotten in your packet that will go through, and then we are doing a site visit with, um, I know some people might be attending that tomorrow as well, but just for us, another chance for us to get a little more familiar with the site and do some analysis of the existing conditions. So I think the first thing. I guess I just want to, maybe Mia and I should both kind of formally introduce ourselves, uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with us, um, both of us from Horticupland Mac Landscape Architects and, um, have worked with some of you over the years, so nice to get a chance to see you all again. Um, so we're excited to, to work with you for sure.
Yeah.
So the first.
Yeah, the first thing we wanted to just talk about is what defines success for this project to you? And these are things that really help us, um, with, that ultimately formulate our goals and kind of project objectives. And so we wanted to pick everybody's brain about that and, um, Danu's giving a thumbs up because Mia enlarged the screen, so, no problem.
It's for myself too.
So we have the first question of what are three words that describe the essence of Overlook Park? And we won't hold you to three words, but if we want to go around and get everybody's thoughts on that, we'll take some notes. I have a, another screen I'll be taking some notes on. But Danu, do you want to start?
Uh, actually, you know what? I, I, I'm gonna take a little backseat, just because I don't want to have any kind of conflict of interest because I'm part of Save the Flats who also own this property. So I would love it if Parab, the rest of Parab members would speak up and, and share their, their thoughts and their opinions and, and their views. So anybody else on Parab, go ahead and jump in. I, I'd say, um, honoring the people that came before us. Just as a one item, there's certainly more, but that, I would say that would be one of the starts. And thanks, Robin and Mia.
Anybody else?
On that same note, I think it's gonna be important to not just have a remembrance of who was around before, but how that continues to make, uh, you know, impression and important contribution to today. Right? So not just in the past, but in the present and the continued future.
So if I, this is Chris, i- if I might suggest a word to encompass both what Jan and Rebecca said is maybe inclusive? Perhaps? I don't know.
Pretty much, you always want to be whatever cost they could get because you know that.
I'm gonna move from the past to the present and go right to geography and say that it's a link in that we don't really have a lot of open space or park. Um, infrastructure on the east side of Manitou, most of our parks are in the center or in the, I'm sorry, on the north side. Uh, most of our parks are in the center or on the south side, and I think that this is something that many residents have wanted to see for a long time, linking, um, the north side to the south side and maybe creating a opportunity to launch toward a ring Manitou, uh, park or trail, uh, is important.
Okay. I think it's, um, a, a nice demonstration of, um, how we're, can, um, how we can demonstrate that Manitou is committed to sustain, sustainability and just grassy spaces or, you know, spaces that are in unity and harmony with the natural environment around us. We could have sold that off and had it, you know, it, it could have been built into a, a gas station or something, you know? So it's Manitou, um, living up to its values.
Anything else? Not, we'll move on to what are your goals for the project?
Um, I would say this is sort of conceptual or like vague, but like healing. Like healing for the community and like healing the land and.
Yeah, I think what everybody's saying is awesome, and so like with that too, like connectivity, so connecting the different environments, but then also, you know, how that fits into all of Manitou. all of Manitou, the natural environment and so on. So just, yeah, connectivity.
All right. Any other goals as far as? You know, what what do we, what do we want to accomplish? And if we don't, you know, abide by these goals, we won't be successful. Kind of think about it like that.
Well, I think that this also needs to be something that really activates uh, the north side and this space. Right now, there is no reason to go there unless you are parking or you are storing something in a storage facility. Uh, figuring out how to create something that can be accessed from town, whether you're on foot, on bike, or on uh, or in a car uh, or taking public transportation is going to be really important because otherwise, I think this is going to be a bit of a isolated area, an island, so to speak. And I want to see specific things that will help to, well, I'll build on what Rebecca just said, connect this to our other parks uh, or connect to open space and make this something that is um, uh, a a destination and connected to what we already have in our recreation environment.
All right, anything else on goals?
Um, I would also say that I I also don't want it to be like, you know, it's the native quote unquote park, right? Like, it's just like an afterthought that we kind of stuck it there. Like, I want it to be like real good relationships with the community members, right? Native, non-native. Um, so I think that's a really important part for me.
I would, I would also love, if we want to get actually very specific, I would love to see a giant slide.
Um, I would say maybe uh, we've talked about education. So like, we talked about perhaps some like interpretive signage, so you know, I don't, I don't know what exactly that would look like, but.
Something that we can kind of work through that as we go through the concepts. Sure, that'll evolve.
And with the pollinator um, focus that I think is included on your, one of your um, plans, if there could just be some labeling of what those plants are, what they provide, that kind of thing, could could be part of rather than just a separate kiosk, but an interpretive within the sustainability.
Or maybe Jan, um, I'm sure you've probably experienced that. I don't know if anybody else has, but the Zerick Demonstration Garden uh, that the uh, that CSU has on Mesa is really a a tremendous um, resource for community gardening. Maybe this is an opportunity to take that idea and turn this into a uh, pollinator uh, habitat demonstration uh, in the same vein. And if anybody hasn't gone to take a look at that, I'd highly recommend it. It's not just a place to exchange your Christmas lights.
Okay. Hmm, so moving on to the next one, what are your biggest concerns about? Oh, sorry.
One more is um, I think art and creativity is also a goal. Okay, yeah. Because that, we've talked to community members that are interested in contributing for about that.
Okay, great. Any other goals? Okay, so next one is what are your biggest concerns about this project?
I would say the traffic and the noise and the lack of like water up there. Like, those are just logistical things.
Right, those are important, too.
Yeah, my biggest concern is that I think that we're the only part of the city that's talking about this space. Um, I I worry that our effort is going to be for not because there is not a larger buy-in. And I don't think that we have done much to try to identify other stakeholders uh, in this project and really uh, create some excitement in the community uh, with our our city government um, or with any other uh, private or public organizations that may have an interest in this project. Uh, and so I'm worried that we are going to put in this effort and we'll get something small uh, that will not um, be utilized uh, nor activated in the way that we envision.
Just to piggyback on that and or that it doesn't get done. It's never completed even with what we want in a small way.
You know, um, just to add to, so this isn't a concern, but I have actually spoken with uh, members of the Mobility Board Park, it's, what's it called? Parking and Mobility. Um, they actually are interested in working with us and contributing, so it is on their radar. Um, but that's just one stakeholder.
OSAC is aware of it also. We we have included them on uh, past discussions and City Council is aware of it, too, and so is the Matford.
So that being said, I guess, Rob and Mia, you know, perhaps you can help guide us like when to include those other stakeholders and, you know, when it makes sense to get feedback and input from them.
Yeah, sounds good. We can, we can definitely do that.
And also, I just want to say, I'm so happy that we're working with you again.
We are.
I think we're all thrilled.
So we'll we'll um, kind of coordinate that with Jillian, too, and uh, and you all of who else wants to be involved and should be involved. And I think once we get past some initial concepts, it's probably a good time for us to talk about um, who to share those with and get some feedback. And it is a good time to start to get some buy-in and um, make sure they're part of the process. Okay. So the next one we have is just potential park improvements. This is really straight from the RFP and a starting point. So we wanted to just go through and make sure these are the kind of the program that we would like to see in the park. Also find out, are there other things that have been discussed or other things we should consider? And as we work through the concepts, too, there might be some things that we come up with as well, um, but we want to make sure that we're including everything that you envisioned the park should have. And so this is kind of a starting point for that. So we can walk through it. Some of this has already been talked about. I think we talked about the sculpture um, that I believe is already, I don't know if it's already created, is that, yeah, no, not, not quite yet. But we're gonna meet the artist tomorrow onsite, I believe.
Yes.
Perfect. So we have that. Uh, we talked about pollinator garden and um, water is a concern, so we'll have to evaluate that as we work through these concepts. And then you know, pathways, parking was something we wanted to talk about. Um, we understand that this also needs to double as a helipad, so we were kind of curious that there's different size helipads and who's using this? And if there's somebody we need to coordinate with on the specific parameters of that. So I don't know if anybody has information about that. And if you don't, that's okay. We can, we can dig into it and find out um, who will have that information, but we thought we'd bring it up.
Rob, and this is Jillian. I can find that out for you.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I would, I would say that one of the, I think, specific things that'll be important in the design of this area is creating a good uh, rather not use the word, well, I suppose barrier, but also transition zone between the commercial entities that are already up there and also the traffic and the needs like the helipad uh, so that um, I think that will help us focus, but also help to really uh, create a more peaceful environment and um, and uh, uh, help us really focus on on the best part of the area, which is the overlook.
Yeah, yeah, me and I were already kind of talking about that a little bit of just all the uses there and.
Yeah, and it feels like two different, I mean, it feels like three different areas. If you're on the north side, all you can think about is traffic and uh, you know, just i- it feels like a, you know, like what it has been, which is a staging ground for construction projects or reclamation. But then if you're down on the overlook area, you already don't hear the traffic and your gaze is drawn uh, to the beautiful vistas to the west and to the south. Um, and so I think working within that is is gonna be, is gonna be important. And then there's plenty of space up there, uh, hopefully for us to be able to do what we want and still have adequate room for parking or for a helipad or what have you. But I think keeping those items kind of separate to some degree will be nice.
Okay, um, signage, we did talk about that, Chris. I think you mentioned that. Rainwater collection structure, we can come up with various ways that we can um, kind of creatively and artfully incorporate some of that. But is there anything that you all had specifically in mind? Was it more, you know, related to sustainability and kind of repurposing of water and?
Combined with artistic is always nice, but yes.
Okay. And then buffer zones, berms, I think, Tim, that sort of hits on a little bit of what you were talking about, just how do we create a comfortable environment for the users here?
Yeah, and even I I think it would be um, it would be really neat if there could be um, almost a a a transition period from where you would say park or maybe from another area towards getting to where the actual park is. Uh, kind of like how you see in other park design where foot traffic, car traffic, bicycle traffic may be separated in both space, but also line of sight.
Robin, um, this is just an idea. I don't know if it's, if it will work, but like, what about education with the rainwater collection, too, like? Just to, you know, yeah.
Okay, and then no lighting is desired up there for parking or or pedestrian? Is that correct? Are we thinking maybe there would be like, security level lighting? Like, maybe there's a pedestrian pool or is it no lighting as preferred?
I'd like to know from Jillian, you know, we're gonna have a composting toilet, at least one. Is there a need for some kind of security um, assessing? And maybe from, we should ask the police, too, the police department. I don't know.
Yeah, most likely, we're gonna want a light on the restroom, and that's mainly because it's our staff that goes up there at ten o'clock at night and locks those restrooms. And it's just safer to have some sort of lighting available. Um, so security lighting is something that, from the park's maintenance standpoint, we'd like to consider.
I I would argue um, just to keep it minimal because I don't want it to be a super eyesore for the neighbors across the way because you can see that.
Or maybe things can be done, you know, uh, in terms of where the light is placed or the types of shades that are used in order to limit any light pollution.
Totally.
Right.
Or or maybe they can lock the restrooms earlier. Like, you know, like at, you know, seven o'clock or something like that.
There's gonna need to be lighting though, Danny, I think. I don't think we can get away. I would, I I I think it would be wonderful. We didn't have any, but um, you know, when you think that it's dark in the wintertime at, you know, four thirty, uh, there's gonna have to be something in order to, you know, make sure that things are safe, that people uh, can walk, that our staff are safe. Um, I don't, unfortunately, I don't see that there's gonna be any way around that as much as I would like to, like it to be that way.
Well, then with Rebecca, minimal, 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 and you know, low cutoff lights, maybe? That are maybe solar powered.
Also, I think it will depend on, you know, that connectivity, you know, perhaps if there's bike racks or if there's, you know, there's obviously gonna be car parking, um. People will need to be able to see to some extent, but I I I think we all are in agreement that, like, minimal lighting.
Yeah, we're not encouraging people to use this in the dark. It's just safety if somebody's, you know, going through or out of the site.
And that would be more toward like that north end, not the south, like overlook area, just like near the um, restroom and the parking and the and that. I don't know what a helipad would require as far as if that needs lighting.
I'll ask when I ask about the size. I don't think it needs lighting because it's a helipad right now without lighting.
Cool.
Okay, anything else you can think of that we wanna consider as we develop the concepts? And again, we'll be exploring ideas as well as the program that you have, just to bet some options. All right, I thought we would just briefly go through the couple of concepts. As I mentioned, it was a little bit of an in a bubble, but just, it would be just good to get some initial like reactions to the concepts, if you will. So I'll have Mia go through and explain those. And um, and again, we'll still be going back and kind of fresh starting with concepts, but we did include those with the proposal.
Absolutely. These are just a kickoff point of get some ideas flowing and feel free to chime in if there's something that really sticks out to you and we can talk about it. Um, so this is just a very quick little photo study of what the existing conditions are. And obviously, everyone's pretty familiar with the site, but we'll walk it again tomorrow and get a little more familiar with some of the intricacies of it, but um, I think we've all seen some of these. And obviously, there are some beautiful vistas and views that are super key to this entire project, as well as um, just the space itself is just, has a lot of potential and um, we're pretty excited to to work on it. The first concept is called Bloom and Ethnobotanical Garden, and this was sort of inspired by a few projects in the region um, as far as what ethnobotany actually is. And so it's basically the idea of using the site as a study of plants. And so in looking at all the indigenous tribes and the uses that they had for all the different plants and, you know, ba- basically medical needs or um, religious needs or any, anything that they used it for as far as using it for practical purposes. Um, we thought this would be a really cool educational opportunity to bring in some of those plants and not only experiment with. not only experiment with growing them in different areas and, you know, it doesn't have to look picture perfect throughout the year. It's more of just a, a study and expression of appreciating what these plants provide throughout history and being able to learn about them. So in taking that as sort of the, the basis of this concept, growing off of that in both what the plant means to people and what it means to the environment. So birds, bees, pollinators, what that means from the water collection aspect and just kind of tying everything together in a really beautiful expression as you're walking through the space. And so as you enter this parking lot, you know, you're getting out of your car and then you have the opportunity to use the toilet right before you get into the park. But once you enter the park, it's all about the plants and nature. And so you're welcomed by wherever the sculpture ends up being. I know that the sculptor is going to be on site tomorrow to help point us in the direction of where this wants to be located. But in this particular concept, it would have been the first thing that you see as you enter the space. And then as you sort of meander around the park, you have soft surface trails, you have little bridges that you can cross over what would be a really neat little cobble swale water collection opportunity. And even when there's no water on the site, it would still be a beautiful little rock swale and you could have larger boulders and it would still be really beautiful to look at and appreciate even when there's no water blowing through the site. As you make your way around, there's sort of some smaller bee friendly habitats and birdhouses, like I mentioned. Possibly some sculptures from either local artists or having something that's a little bit more of a sound therapy opportunity. So they make these really cool large chimes that are beautiful to look at, but you can also just kind of ping on them and it makes really nice music and not necessarily something that the neighbors would complain about if it radiated beyond that, but just a really soft sort of calming chime kind of sound. And as you make your way around at the beginning of the swale, you could have rainwater collection structure with some rain chains, just something again that looks beautiful even when there's no rain falling. But if it did start raining, you could still appreciate the beauty of it as it kind of collects and makes its way through the cobble swale. And then obviously the beautiful view, when you get to the grand vista, you'd have sort of a nice shade structure with some seating. And we were looking at all these different kinds of beautiful patterns, the different Native American groups, including the Cheyenne specifically, that had these amazing fan patterns as part of their culture. And I thought it would be just so cool if we could incorporate that somewhere into the landscape, whether it was, you know, in an art sculpture or in the pavement or something, just as you're sitting there looking at the grand vista, you have that connection. So as you're walking around the space, this is kind of the first stab at incorporating both the art and the nature, kind of tying it together. And then also with the berm, trying to keep the sound away from the highway, obviously, and there's not existing berm on the site, but making that a little bit larger. So you could really block some of that noise and having some deciduous shade trees to provide shade and some evergreens to help block additional sound from the road as well. And then obviously some future, potential future trail connections. I know that was trying to tie into the rest of the community. That was a, a thought that keeps being brought up. So where that would tie into, that's something we can, we can look at, but yeah, and obviously the, the parking lot itself, trying to block some of that noise where we can. It's a tiny space, but I think we can do a lot to squeeze in some extra berms here and there to to block as much as we can, make it a nice quiet space when you enter the parking lot. And on this particular concept, there's two entries into the parking lot. So it does make it a little bit easier for entry and exit points if there is an event happening or there's sort of a little drop off area, you could possibly if someone has some accessibility needs, they could have a nice place where they could pull off and park or potentially have a food truck there or just something, you know, an opportunity there for for some kind of staging and drop off. But I'll pause there and see if there's any comments and questions on this one.
I really like what I see.
I know I'm so excited with the ethnobotany and the, yeah, so everything looks super good. So, great job.
And I like both of them.
You want to explain the other one, Mia?
Yeah, sure. We can jump to the other one.
I do have a question about the parking and the helipad, like is it all the same, is the parking on top of the helipad?
So the heli, that's a very good question. I think we need to research a little bit on how that would work exactly. Right now, everything that's dashed is basically indicating where parking would be, but there's no striped lines. This is all sort of a permeable parking lot of either gravel or some kind of road base, but I think we can talk about it. It could be, it could be permeable pavers, it could be a lot of different things, crusher finds, just bare soil, but I think we should talk about it.
Yeah, and I think, Chris, that's something we want to understand a little bit more is we were like, well, if there's cars there, the the helicopter can't land there. So I think just understanding the parameters of that and will be really helpful just to verify the size and, and then use and, you know, limitations. So we can dial that in a little more.
Right. And if there's an emergency happening, how much time is there from when the helicopter knows that it's coming to for people to move cars? Or if there's a, if there's a dynamic there that we, we can research a little bit more.
Thanks.
Yeah, of course. But that's definitely a very good question. We'll have to work through that. So this concept is called Flow, an expressive ecosystem. And this one focused a little bit more on interactiveness and nature. So on this one, not only was it an expression of native plants and pollinators and water, but it, it wanted to create a little bit more of an opportunity for larger gathering spaces to happen, for educational opportunities. So the main feature when you walk into the space is the shade structure with seating around what could be a really cool water collection sort of focus. So you could have the education of maybe larger classes of people or yoga or whatever it is that people wanted to gather here. This could be fitting slightly larger of a, a grouping of people and having this feature of water when you walk in sort of the main focal point. And then as you walk through the space, you could have a hands-on outdoor lab with loose parts. And we were thinking possibly you could take plants from the actual garden and use it as an educational opportunity in this outdoor lab to learn how to how to weave or how to make a certain type of medical ointment or something. And it could just be this little nature slash educational space. Whatever it ends up being, just having those little gathering spaces where you could do little classes or or just bring a family and you could go out there and have a little learning opportunity. And maybe there's some signage to explain, hey, this is, you know, these are some loose parts. What can you build out of this? And just getting your hands dirty a little bit. But then as you're walking through the space, you have all these other artistic opportunities for a sculpture. You have your native planting that you could wander around, not just in the permeable soft scape trails, but you could have little flagstone steppers that kind of, you can disappear into the gardens a little bit for, for just having a little quiet space to walk through. We also thought it'd be neat to have a nesting box for hawks or something, just to bring more nature and animals into the space and as well as people, obviously. But also having an overlook shade structure at the same beautiful overlook point and having another berm similar to the other concept with some trees and making sure your sound is blocked as much as possible. In this concept, brought the composting toilet into the park a little bit further if, if that was sort of desired, if there's a larger group, it'd be a shorter walk to use the restroom before you get back to your car. But that's also something that can be worked through if, if it's safer and maybe lighting works better closer to the parking lot, that, that works fine. Also an opportunity for maybe some overhead signage that the community designs or whether it's overhead or just a little sign next to the entry point, just to welcome you into the space. But yeah, there's boulder seating throughout the park. It just becomes this nice little flexible space for all kinds of different events. On this particular concept, there was only one entry point in the parking lot. And that allowed for a little bit larger of some planting to expand into the parking lot itself around it and sort of create more of a bu- buffer opportunity. So you could have the trail system start from, if you were to park way over here in the corner, you could still have a little bit of a nice quiet connection before you reach to the main focal point of the park. So just kind of playing with that idea a little bit more. And I'll pause there again.
I like the two exits and entryways in the first design for the parking lot. And I think they would really, like you'd say, help with events or flow of traffic.
Definitely helps. It's always encouraged to have two points of access. Especially if there's an emergency to, you know, ambulance or something needs to get out.
Right.
I really like how you're including like animals, like, like this is actually like habitat for animals. And I just learned about this organization. I think it's called Wild Connection. And they're all about creating connectivity for animals. And and just all, all wild species. So I think that this could be, you know, connectivity with our open spaces and, you know. Anyway, I think it's really cool that you thought of the animals. I think the other one also does, it's just not as if, as explicit. You know, because it says the botanical garden. You know, talks about what it means for other life to engage with the plants and use them to thrive. So I don't know, I feel like that's implied there, not necessarily. It's, it's not explicit, but it's somewhat implied.
On this concept, I mean, this first one?
On the, on the botanical garden, yeah.
I like the fan structures with the swing benches.
Yeah, swing benches are fun.
Yeah.
Um, which one had the swing benches? This one, the Eco?
This one had them, but really you could apply them to either one.
Okay.
And I like the wind chimes and the rain, the rain chains and all that stuff too. It also seems like there's a little bit of a buffer or berm. Uh, so the storage structures are not so observable. Is that right?
Yes, so these berms definitely would block some of the views of the storage facilities. This trail could be pulled in a little bit further and a buffer could, or a berm could be extended a little bit further down if, if we want to block them even more.
You know, the, the lot that's adjacent to our park area where you, you have like sun from the highway? They're using that for a parking lot now. So Fridays, Saturday, Sunday, uh, there's cars parked. Yeah, right. Yeah, on that one. So that would be really nice to have like a buffer so we don't look at all those cars.
Is that, what's that parking board now?
It's for the Rainbow Falls. The adventures out west. Uh, are using one of their shuttles and for 20 bucks you can park up there and they'll shuttle you down to Rainbow Falls, drop you off. And then in that, there's a little dirt parking area on Serpentine Drive. They've got it, all these concrete blocks partitioned off for a turnaround. For the shuttle to be able to turn around and go back up again to the flats to pick up more people. So right now they only have a conditional use for that. So I, it's kind of like a little trial run right now. But I don't know how, if they're going to keep the hours Friday, Saturday and Sunday, or if they're going to try to expand it.
Does that happen throughout the year or is that just a certain?
I, I'm not sure. I, it's, it's kind of contingent on when the El Paso County won't, want to open Rainbow Falls. I, I kind of suspect that they may close it in the winter time. I, I don't know that answer. I think you're right, Danu. I think they, they don't, they haven't thought that far ahead. This is brand new as far as an idea, just opening it.
Okay. Great. Well, thanks for your thoughts on those concepts. The next question we had was is there, if there's a budget that you're trying to stay within on this project or if we kind of, are we trying to work within a budget and do as much as possible with as little dollars as possible, right?
I, I would say that, I would say that.
Yeah.
Because, because we would be looking for you to come up with a, a, a number for that. Once we get everything, you know, nailed down a little bit better.
Right.
I would say basically, yeah, do as much as we can with this little bit of, of money.
Okay. And then as far as collaboration, I know we're going to meet with the artists tomorrow. Are there tribal members that anyone has contacted or been in contact with?
Our artist, Manny, I, I call him Manny. His name is Manuel, but he's, you know, nicknamed Manny. He is in really close contact with a lot of the tribal elders. So he's been, he's been talking to them. And one of the elders went up there with him and, and found one of the spots that, that where he felt was a really good spot for the sculpture and did a blessing and everything. And, and so he'll show you where that is tomorrow.
Okay. Great. Do you happen to know which tribe did the blessing?
Who? Uh, you'll have to ask him that tomorrow.
Curious.
Yeah. I want to say the Utes. Was that Rebecca?
Um, probably Manny's working with them. Yeah. Cause there's the local communities here. So I, I guess the Ute.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay. The other items are a little bit probably what we can more coordinate with Jillian on, I don't know if there's a survey that's been done or planned to be done for the site.
There has been a survey done for the site. But unfortunately, they don't put any pins in, so I have no idea where our boundaries are. So, yeah, I think that that was Drexel? Barnum, Burnham? Yeah.
Drexel Barrel, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And when when Skylar was here, he had them go back up there to kind of re-stake things out, but I didn't see any. I saw a few, you know, wooden stakes in the ground, but those get broken or taken out. So it'd be nice if we had something a little bit more permanent.
Yeah, I wonder, do you know if they did CAD drawings, like site survey for the project?
I I would assume they did, but I don't know. Gillian, can we check that out?
Yeah, I'll I'll reach out to John with Drexel Barrel and and see if there are any CAD drawings.
Okay, sounds good. And I know you're gonna get us some information on the helipad. The, I did want to talk a little bit about the community engagement process, so right now, our next steps would be to, um, we're going to do some of our existing conditions and site analysis and then the goal would be to meet with all of you when we come back with those findings. Um, we'll also be developing two, three concepts for the park. And we have community, one community meeting that would be, I'm thinking would be the time where we present those two to three concepts to the community for feedback. And then, um, we would follow that up with an online survey, which we've we've done with you all before. For those who aren't able to attend an in-person meeting. Does that seem in line with what your goals were for community engagement?
Yes.
All right. And then we have a draft schedule that Mia, I wonder if we want to pull up the other one. So I know in the proposal, I believe your, the goal was to have city council approve this in October. Do we have a, the clean version?
Oh, sorry. Yep.
And while she's pulling that up, a question I have for you is, is the, right now, per your website, the pair of meeting is scheduled in September for Labor Day? Is that, will that hold or is that going to shift a week or?
That will probably shift to the following.
To following Monday. Okay, that's the assumption that we made. We were thinking is that it would happen. I think that is the September 9th.
It is.
Right, to avoid
Okay, so this is our draft schedule um, that we can work with, uh, you all and Gillian on, but so we're having our kickoff meeting now. We're going to do this, the project, um, site visit tomorrow. And then site analysis, uh, over the next couple of weeks. We were planning on regrouping with you all on if if you, there's room on your September 9th agenda. And then we would do, um, concept development after that and come back to you in October. We were trying to hit your meetings versus trying to have special meetings, but we did, we did put in here one potential special meeting. And that was to kind of back us up from potential hitting the city council meeting on November 5th, which would be approval of the master plan. Um, and that we would come to you October 31st. And we'll, we can send this out. We worked on this and we can finesse it, but this was kind of our first draft of the schedule. And I don't know if it's realistic to have another meeting in October, so.
That's Halloween.
That is Halloween, so that might not be a good day either.
Think your kids trick or treating, Robin.
Okay, so that that's that and we'll, we'll share that and, um, Gillian, we'll work with Gillian too. We can share that and help get it refined.
Yeah, we can finesse it as needed.
But otherwise, I think we've talked about all these other things and want to see if there's any other thoughts or comments. Um, otherwise we'll be down there tomorrow and getting to check out the site somewhere.
I'm I'm wondering, do you think it would be helpful if if everybody kind of picked out the different components of these drawings of what they really liked? Would that help, Robin?
Sure. I mean, we'll take any additional feedback on those for sure.
Yeah, and if you have other Would it be possible to put together a list of design elements? That we could then maybe put a, you know, put a dot on, kind of like that exercise that you do at community planning type meetings, where we all get maybe two choices?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be probably at the the big public community meeting then, right?
Yeah, so that one we would do the concept. So we'll bring the concepts, the the intent would be, we would bring the concepts to you first. Walk through them with you, get any feedback. We'd make any modifications to them before we take them to the community. And we would have, typically we'll have get their thoughts on them, but also have those dot voting exercises to kind of what are your top priority things that you'd like to see? Which will help us hone them. And as we know, we're not usually going to pick one concept. We're going to kind of take a few different things from the different concepts and ultimately merge those together. So, um, we could, so I guess, Tim, one option. We could do that with what we have here right now. We could also do that when we come back to you in September.
Either works for me. I just think that it would be good if we present the community with a somewhat curated list. Overall, I think that the the simplest version that we have going to construction is going to be the most effective. And if we can really narrow that down now, if anybody in the community meeting has an idea and wants to add that, awesome. But, uh, but I think if you can put that narrowed down, would be really, really helpful.
Do you want us to, we can make a list. I don't know if you want to do that now, Tim, or you want us to make a list for each one of those concepts to kind of have everybody weigh in outside of this meeting?
Maybe asynchronously. What does everybody else think? Granted, there's nothing like time pressure to encourage you to make a choice.
I kind of think as much feedback as you can get right now, just to get you guys started, uh, would be helpful to you, maybe.
Or should we just go around the table, so to speak, and everybody uh, throw out two items that to them seem to be the uh, their favorite? Or is there a more effective way to do that in this meeting now?
I think that works, Tim. I like that plan. And I'd say let's not include the obvious things, you know, that are the knowns, the parking and those things. So it's it's the more fun elements than the functional ones that we know we need to have.
Okay, is everybody else good with that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I'll go first. My absolute favorite element is the and I apologize, I forgot what word you used to describe the the garden, I think, did you say ethno- ethnobotany? I I think, uh, like I said, I I really like the the Zurich demonstration garden resonates with me. I think a place that you could go and appreciate and also learn and take from. Uh, in terms of your own education, what you want to do with your own space, uh, is great. So I really love that. And I really like the efforts to make this a a private space with the berms, uh, even almost like you are transitioning from one element to another element. Those are probably my two favorite parts of the design.
Jan will go next, if that's okay. I like the interactive bells, tubular bells.
Lost you, Jan.
Just a second. Maybe it's me. Okay, um, I like the tubular bells with the soft sounds, um, any of the interactive things that are not going to be destroyed easily. And and I really like the concept that there potentially could be a place to do yoga or some small gathering up there. I think that's um, a community building kind of thing that would be something that maybe could pull some more members of the community there.
All right, who wants to go next?
Um, I'll go. This is Rebecca. And I'll have one thing per se or a couple of things, but, um, oh, sorry. Sorry, um, I like, I really do like the first design a lot, just with the ethno botanical components and like the the big sculpture you were describing was really great with the multiple exits and it's just I don't know, there's so much in that one that really captured. So, great.
Okay, thank you.
This is Chris. I'm kind of cramming over here, looking over the designs again. Yeah, that the ethno botanical garden is great. I I am a little concerned about water and how we're going to water trees and plants. But definitely like the idea of native plants that can survive up there without much attention. And I do like the sound therapy sculptural chimes. I think that could be really cool up there. Because it is very, it's sort of a vast area. And, um, I guess that was two things.
How does everybody feel about shade, shade structures?
I like, I think it's important because it's it's really sunny up there.
Yeah, when I said sculpture, I meant that shade structure. Artistic sculpture.
Concur. Shade is, shade is good if possible.
Yeah, especially if it uses, you know, collects rainwater. That that would be really great, uh, to have that.
I liked when you described the cobble swell, which is a rainwater carrier. As long as it doesn't dry up because it's too spread out. I don't know if if that makes any like scientific sense. I do like that the botanical one focuses so much on who, uh, sound pollution dampening. And all of the emphasis upon the trees, although when I look at the two diagrams or or the plans, I see a lot of trees in the second one. I did like the, uh, the opportunity though for the, in the other one for like an outdoor yoga. I think if there's too many spots for like classes and stuff, it might lose some of its beauty. There should be a lot of like there'd have to be like a lot of picnic tables or something or I don't know. I I'm just imagining stuff like that, like, but, um, a yoga spot would be really beautiful or lovely place to do all of that. Um, and and I like the way, maybe it was just the way you described it, but there was almost a journeying element to the botanical gardens, almost like you're in a secret garden. It had a kind of a secret garden idea to it. I kind of like that a lot.
Who else do we have?
I think that's everybody on board.
Okay. Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you.
Hey, Gillian?
Yeah.
Do you have an opinion?
I really like the cobble swell as well. I think that's a really unique element. And I also love the idea of including a space for outdoor yoga. Uh, one, because I'm a yogi and two, I think there's so many more, there are so many more folks who who might recreate in the outdoors if we offer places for them to to practice their favorite forms of recreation. So I think that's a fantastic idea and I I would like to include that.
We might have to put artificial turf in there for the yoga mats. Go ahead, Gillian.
Yeah, you can bring your own mat.
Yeah, most people do have one.
I also, uh, like the concept with the composting toilet closer to the parking lot, just putting that out there.
You know, I, you know, Gillian, at first I, I, uh, I I thought I liked it better in the the second one where it was closer to the, you know, where you enter, enter the park. But if we're going to have to have it lit, I think you have where it is now, where you just said that you liked it. I I think that that would be better over there. Plus it would be easier for park staff to get to it because they could just, you know, pull right up there out of the parking lot and just jump out and do what they have to do.
Right. Gillian, do you have any of those right now?
Any composting toilets?
Yes.
No, we don't.
Okay, okay.
This would be our our first, uh, organic, uh,
Well, when you say composting toilet, you're talking about, you know, like the kind of thing that you might see at a trailhead in the national forest, right? You know, something that is excavated and has a, you know, whatever ventilation system they put in there to keep everything you know, decomposing.
Correct. Yeah, it has the vault below it. Yep.
And it's solar powered to kind of increase the composting? I've seen those.
Yeah, and part of it's about orientation too of, you know, ideally if you're facing them south or west, um, the step, the stacks part or the vault part um, helps increase that compostability as well. And probably a little further away from where people are gonna be is never a bad thing for a composting toilet. And it's really not that far of a walk, if you really needed to use the bathroom, you can walk a few extra steps.
So I'm looking at the. Second design, where is the sort of yoga area?
On this one? So it was meant to be sort of incorporated under the shade structure. But really, if depending on how big of a class it is, or if it's more of an open area, it could be. It could grow in size for sure.
Okay, I'm trying to open up my. Okay, under this.
You know, yoga is something that we already have. Happening or have had happen in the city with classes either happening in city hall. Or in, um, mansion park. I wonder if we can ask. Someone who is doing that now, whether or not that this is a good site for that, or, and if it is, what kind of. Details might be needed, but, um, but we, you know, we already have that resource and, uh, they may be able to tell us. How to do that.
Yeah, especially since there'll be parking here, that definitely helps. Yeah, Julian, I don't know if there's a. Ideal class size, you know, and then we can evaluate how much space that takes, but. That might be helpful. And maybe it wants to be closer to the Vista instead of. Where it is, so we can always work through that.
Yeah, I'll connect with Yoga Manitou, they, uh, put on the, the classes that we do through Parks and Rec and I can find out. What might be ideal for their, their typical class size, so yeah, I'll look into that.
Okay.
I do like how you have the shade structures positioned and concept too. I like them broken up like that.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Otherwise, this is great, I think we got some good feedback today. And we'll plan on, Denew, you can let us know if you have room on the agenda in September, but.
I'll make rooms.
Okay, sounds good. Otherwise, we'll plan to see whoever is joining us tomorrow on site.
It's at 10 o'clock tomorrow up on, on the flats.
Looking forward to it, yeah.
Hey, great.
Any closing thoughts?
Anybody? Great ideas, thank you as usual. Yeah, thanks, thanks for, for coming up with these, uh, draft design sketches, that's great.
Um, my only other thought, sorry, I was trying to fix my screen and I finally fixed it. No, honey, I'm talking to the people, okay, um, is just, you know. I know we, you mentioned, we were talking about yoga here, but I think. Also previously, when we've been talking about the project, we've also just been talking about gatherings in general. Um, and you know, when you meet Manny tomorrow. I think he's gonna have a lot to share with you about, um. You know, he's been sort of. He, he expressed to me that, you know, the, the native community needs a place to. Come together. And I, I just think that there's a lot of opportunity for community to come together, whether, you know, whoever it is. And in whatever shape or form it takes. And this space might be able to provide that. So anyway, just maybe bring that up to him about. Meeting space and, and, and if he has any ideas around that.
Sounds good. I think that's a great comment.
And then one, one. Other thing I'm thinking of too along those lines is, um. I'm thinking about this yoga platform in Green Mountain Falls. And it's a very simple space, but it's just a platform made of. Like, you know, maybe that Trex material or something. And it's just a flat space with like a bench on one side, like a built in, it built into the hill and it's, um. You know, it's multi-purpose, you know, you could sit there and meditate, you could. You can have several people sitting on it all at the same, you could probably fit 10 people on it. You know, so it's not, I don't, I don't know if planning around yoga specifically is really necessary, but. Yeah, anyway, those are some thoughts.
Yeah, multifunctional, given the size of the space will be important.
Sure.
You could have a small wedding, a drum circle, you could do all kinds of. Small gatherings, for sure.
Yeah.
Good comment. Does anyone have any information on the property that goes between these two parcels?
Oh, you mean the, that's Topeka Road, it's an unplanted city road. That kind of, that's what cuts these two lots in half.
Okay.
And that would, that, that would show up in their survey, I'm assuming.
So, yeah, they got a title report, yeah, it should show up in there.
Yep.
So it's, if it's city, that's a little, I was just wondering if it was private, we, we didn't see anything on that in the. Assessor's information, so.
Yeah, no, at one point, we asked, our group asked the city if they would vacate that road. So that, that property could become one whole property. And, and they said no, because that was technically the, the only access for. Other private property that swings all the way around. To the other side of the storage units, like, like, yeah, all those, yeah. And, and that's the social trail there, but then all those lots that are in, in, encased in the Manitou Terrace in that area. That's the only way that they could access their property from above. But they'd have to develop the road, um, the, uh. The overlook side, because right now it just kind of falls off the, the flat area there, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Robin and Mia, how are you planning to access the area tomorrow? Are you gonna park up top there?
Are we? Yeah, I thought was the plan.
Yeah, I might suggest, um, if, you know, checking out the foot trail that goes down into town. From there.
It's actually a road now, Chris.
It is, yeah, it is a road, it's a rough road. But you can easily walk down to, you know, the post office and Soda Springs Park from, it takes 10 minutes, so. I think that's how, hopefully in the future, a lot of people will access the park.
Yeah.
And just, just kind of a side note.
Yeah, good to get a sense of. The access. Yeah, where people coming from. Mentioned that earlier, yeah, good. Okay, great, well, thanks for all the information.
Great, thank you, Robin, thank you, Mia.
Yeah, of course, we'll see you tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah, and, and then next month too. All right, thank you, anybody? Yeah, okay, anybody have any questions or anything? Okay, great, thank you ladies.
Yep, alright, thank you. Bye.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item six, our reports, the Arborist report. Uh, we'll probably wait on that one.
Yeah, the new Matthew's not, Matthew's not on this evening, he'll have a full report for the September meeting.
Okay, all right, uh, Park and Rec. Uh, the only thing I have to report is that the Manitou Springs Chamber. Uh, want to install a wayfarer, wayfinding sign. On the cro, on the creek walk by the pedestrian bridge, which will tell people where restrooms are. Let me see what else here. It would be, uh, it would include informa, information such as restroom, water station. Trash and recycling and bicycle repair station. Um, and she reached out, uh, Leslie Lewis reached out to OSAC. And they suggested that we in, include someone from Paribas. And so she sent me a, an email asking if I could come to a meeting, uh, Wednesday at nine o'clock, but I can't. But, uh. I just told her I would bring this, you know, just mention it at our meeting tonight and. Just maybe just to get an overall consensus with Paribas. To, uh, see if, if anybody is opposed to a, a wayfinding sign. I, I don't know what it would look like, I'm assuming that they would try to make it match. Uh, the rest of the way, wayfinding signage around town, but I'm not sure. Do you know anything about that, Natalie?
Sorry, um, you know, I really don't, I mean, I know the location, they showed me the location, um, when we were walking through, but I haven't seen designs, I don't know details. So, yeah, but, um, but I'm assuming the design itself, if you just said it had to match. Current signage, I can't imagine that would be an issue.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea to have the wayfinder, I think that's helpful for anyone who's visiting.
Yep.
I missed where you said it was.
So you know, in the back of the chamber, there's that pedestrian bridge. And if you cross over the pedestrian bridge to get to the creek walk. Right, right somewhere there in that area, either to the right or to the left of, of where the, the pedestrian bridge. Hits the, the creek walk.
I think it's a great idea, people are, oh, no one can find that bathroom.
Uh, yeah.
I just had somebody the other day ask me where the bathroom was and they were standing on the bridge.
I didn't even know there was a bathroom there.
It's in the, it's in the chamber building, it's in the chamber.
Oh.
Building.
Okay.
And then we briefly talked about trash receptacles, but they have their big dumpsters. In the, on, on the other side of the bridge, in the parking lot there that people can use. Is anybody opposed to that idea? Okay, great, well, I'll let, I'll let the chamber know. The only other thing is Colin, and I already mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting, so. I'll, I'll have to get more information about protocol with that. With that. We've moved to our council liaison, Natalie, do you have anything for us?
Um, I don't, but, um, I did want to ask, um. You know, in terms of council correspondence tomorrow, I thought I would give them an update on your work on the, the overlook piece. And I missed what day you think or what month you might bring it to council. To discuss, you say October?
I think no, November.
November?
Yeah, is that right, Julian?
Yeah, they were looking at the November 5th council meeting.
Okay. All right, I just, just again, so they're tracking, just like you had brought up, like. You know, just to remind everyone, this is coming and this isn't a new project, so.
Great.
I'll set the, the stage for that tomorrow.
Oh, great, thank you.
Um, any questions from anyone that can try to answer? Okay, cool.
Alrighty, uh, we have the, uh, approved minutes from OSAC. And with that, item seven, director's report from Park and Rec, Julian?
All right, so I just have a brief report this evening, we are gonna be posting the request for bid for Soda Springs Park Phase Two Construction. This coming Friday, uh, and we aim to select a contractor in early September. For that project, Josh Farmer, who was formerly our lead parks maintenance worker, has been promoted to our parks supervisor. So instead of hiring a new parks manager, we promoted Josh and we'll be hiring another parks maintenance worker one. So essentially, this will increase our field staff, which is something that we desperately need, so. Pretty excited for that. I'm working right now with our new PIO, her name's Cassandra. On a webpage explaining our pickleball rules, regulations and expectations. I did ask my crew to put up some temporary signage at the pickleball court. To discourage folks from bringing lawn chairs and coolers onto the court. Which are items that we, we'd rather have outside of the court than on the court, especially if the coolers have food and drink in there. So we're working on that. And that's all, I just had a really brief report for you guys tonight.
Hey, great, any questions for Julian?
Thanks for the, uh, thanks for the update on the pickleball courts, that'll be helpful.
Yeah, no problem.
I, I had, um, well, two small things, I met Josh, uh, this week, thanks for hooking me up with, uh, with that and, um. I think he's gonna be a, a good add, so thank you for your help there. And then, this wasn't necessarily parks, but parks adjacent, I've been noticing on that, um. Bridge that, uh, is on the creek walk trail that was, I think, made by, uh, concrete couch. You know there where the safe route, near where the safe route is?
Yes.
Uh, just past the, uh, the townhomes. So it, people have started putting love locks on that bridge. And six months or eight months ago, there was one, and now they're starting to multiply. I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that, and that's. I, I just, I, I feel like I've been reading articles about how those things proliferate and then become out of control in many places. Uh, it might be something to get on and be proactive to get those off of there.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that, Tim, I wasn't aware that locks were being placed on that bridge, so we'll look into that.
I. A little background, I, I know one guy who put a lock on there and it was, it, it was kind of like in memory of, is how he. Told me that that was the purpose of them.
That's, that's beautiful, anywhere else.
In remembrance of, of people that, that have passed and stuff. I don't know where that started, but that's what I heard anyway.
Yeah, Denew, if there are too many locks on a bridge, it can really damage the infrastructure.
Sure, sure, I mean, I.
If everything's good in smaller doses, but if there are too many, it can become a maintenance issue.
Yeah, nothing, nothing says I love you or I remember you like a master lock that you buy at Ace Hardware. And then, and then put on our gorgeous bridge that was made by, you know, our, our own community artist.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
Okay, great, thanks, Julian. All right, let's move on to old business, we have on our agenda the pollinator, pollinator resolution. Can anybody? Uh, well, first of all, Julian, you gave us three options. And, and I, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't have those three options available to me, one of them was. To approve it as it is. The other one was. To edit it. And then the third was not to approve it, does that kind of sum it up?
Well, Denew, what I'm looking for is direction from Paribas, so does Paribas. As a board, approve of the resolution and support it moving forward? Are there serious considerations to take or? Are there serious considerations to take or edit suggestions that you have before you would approve it? Or would you just not approve it at all? So just looking for some direction so we can move forward with this resolution.
Right. So I talked to, uh, Denise Howell about this. And basically her direction to me for Parab was. She was looking for a, a, a recommendation. Or some kind of advisement from Parab. For city council. To be able to make their own decision. Around this, uh, r- resolution. As well as to just have Parab's feedback on it. So basically pretty much what you just said Julian, but. I need to have some kind of tangible. Concrete, uh. Suggestions or feedback on this that I could present in a letter to council.
Was someone doing a rewrite or a co- co- condensing of the information? Am I remembering that?
Yes, and actually Candace did, however. From what I understand, and Melody, you can jump in. Uh, what I understand from Denise is that. Melody, you weren't interested to change it. Is that? Or can you clarify that?
I think the way that it stands right now is, um. Is good. I wouldn't really change anything. Um, I had gotten feedback about that resolution and again. So I think really. Uh, what I would be asking for is approval and let city council just decide. Where they want to go with that.
So here's. Here's, here's what I'm thinking. I, I think that we, Parab needs to. Give the reasons for why we approve or why we don't approve or. As, as, as our advisory, uh, capacity, city council is. So. I guess.
Hey, Danu, I would say for me personally, I support the spirit of the resolution, but as written and submitted, I find it to be. Uh, too long and too broad, um, to support and. In its current form, unfortunately, I would not support it.
Good, thank you, Tim. Anybody else?
I'd second what Tim says.
Okay.
I'd third it.
Okay, great. Thank you Rebecca. Thank you Jan. So too long, too broad. And, uh.
But emphasize that we like the spirit of it.
We, yes, yes, we support the spirit, yes.
Yeah, and, and I, I would also point out that. We, we try to. Exercise or operationalize the spirit of this in the planning that we undertake. Um, and I hope Melody, um, or anyone else who cares deeply about this. Understands that we are coming from a place of, uh, agreement and support and, and. But our interest at this particular time has much more to do with. Uh, adding to our. I guess bureaucracy for lack of a better term without, um. Without adding, you know, benefit. It's cumbersome, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, um, so for clarification, when you say you support the spirit of that, this resolution. Can you clarify to me what that means? Well, I think we're all supportive of, of the concept of the pollinators and we're definitely supportive of. Having pollinator gardens, et cetera. However, the resolution, the way it reads. And, and, and I said this in the past. Was that it was too long. And also that it, it included too many like. I'd mentioned standard operations of procedure that I didn't think needed to be included in the resolution. Because that was more operational. Uh, maintenance. For the Parks Department to undertake. But the concept of, of the. Pollinators and, and, and adopting. Or recognizing the idea and concept of pollinators. Paraball supports.
Yeah, and I think encouraging, uh, you know, the city. You know, to include that type of design in any. Uh, you know, new construction or, um, renovation of parks. Uh, should be considered, but not necessarily, uh, mandated or, you know, place any other, uh, restriction.
Right. And also, Melody, the city has a MOU agreement with Butterfly Pavilion, right?
Well, yes, that's what I was just thinking of is that this really is a result of that MOU between. The Butterfly Pavilion and, uh, Park and Rec really with Julian. It originally had been approved by Skyler. And now Julian's on board, so it really was coming out of that and also Amy Yargers as a result of that MOU. When she's looking at recommendations to maintain the certification of our. Municipal certified pollinator district. That one of the rec- you know, there was recommendations about, um, a pollinator committee that would have to go through Parab. So that was one of them, excuse me. So yeah, so to answer your question, yep, absolutely, that's, that's where it's at.
Right, and, and basically the, the Butterfly Pavilion, Amy's pretty much guiding the city in terms of just. Fulfilling some of those requirements to be a pollinator district.
Well, that's, that's, well, that's the purpose and the intention of an MOU and so, um. I think that it just always depends on who's the director, you know, and, and a lot of things I've been listening to about as far as. You know, when you've got staff changes, things going on like that, or if it's just like you're adding another burden. To a situation here that we feel like we've already got covered. So, yeah. You know, that's my hope. It's always the hope. That'll be followed and maintained according to the, uh, standards outlined in that certification, re-maintain or recertification.
Okay. Alrighty. Julian, you think we need to take a vote on this or, or, or can I just move forward and, and draft the? Uh, a recommendation for council? And I'll share it with everybody before I send it off.
That's a great question, Danu, um. I'm just thinking through this. So this is my first time working through. A resolution like this. So Parab's recommendation would be no to the resolution. So I'm not sure if I. I'm not sure if it's in the best interest of the resolution for Parab to state their. Disapproval of the resolution, so I'm not sure. I don't know, I guess is my answer, um. I'll definitely bring this information back. And, and chat this over. With Roy. I just don't want to do anything wrong here, but I, I just don't think. I don't know if a letter expressing your disapproval. Is needed.
Well, Denise wanted me to write something for council. Because if I, if I understand correctly, you're gonna take this to council. Council's gonna know why. Parab didn't approve it and these are the reasons why Parab didn't approve it. But we, we approved the concept in the spirit of pollinators. Yeah.
Natalie, are you able to offer insight on this as far as? The, the processes surrounding. Resolutions and board approvals or disapprovals of proposed resolutions brought to council?
Typically, I think it would be included in the memo. And even if it wasn't included in the memo, someone on council is gonna say, how did Parab? You know, what was, how did Parab feel about this or was this brought to Parab's attention? So I don't think there's a way around it, um. Again, I don't know that it needs to be a formal letter. It may just need to be like a brief statement, um. You know, I do like that you've included that. You all appreciate the spirit of what Melody's doing here. I think that's really important, um. So yeah, I would, I would talk to Denise. Um, I would say that there isn't a standard format of how we. How we go about it, but I do believe that somewhere on the memo, we are gonna have Parab's. Um, take on this in that packet.
Right. Yeah.
I would say for me to be as specific as possible. You know, using that information to inform, uh, you know, new planning reservation of, or, and renovation of parks and gardens. But what I, what I really don't agree with is creating an additional. You know, board specifically for this purpose. Or expanding, uh, Parab's duties or purviews to get into the. You know, specific details of types of plants that we're choosing. I, I think that that, there should be more leeway with our contractors or with our city staff. I don't. I don't think that I have the expertise to be, uh, making those decisions.
Right. I, I agree with that too, Tim. I, I, I think we're already. Overloaded with, uh, other groups and, and staff is. There isn't enough staff to be able to, you know, staff another additional, uh. Committee. And, and for us to, to have to fit another committee in, into our. Purview, it would be a lot. So that's why I brought up the. Butterfly Pavilion because they kind of act as that. Particular piece of it. And so instead of having a committee. I would like to omit that out of the resolution. And just let. The city and the, and Melody and Amy from the Butterfly Pavilion work those details out. With park staff.
I think that'd be helpful to include in the memo that you write, Danu. Definitely, um, just the specifics would be really helpful.
Yep. Okay, so. Just to cover our bases then, I'm gonna make a motion. Uh, that Parab supports the concept. And the spirit of the pollinators. And, uh, that, uh. That we support the MOU between the Butterfly Pavilion and, and the City of Manitou. But as it stands now, as the resolution is written. Parab does not support it. For the reasons, uh, that have been outlined. In this discussion. Okay, now Candace. That's a lot for you to catch. Can you, can you capture that?
I'm trying.
Yeah, so, so. So I, that's why I sent you the link for the YouTube. So then you just, yeah, so you can just watch that and then you'll be able to capture exactly what this motion is.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Hey, can I get a second on that? Second. Okay, great. Thanks Jan. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, thank you Rebecca. Chris, Tim? Or Tim already said that, yeah.
Yes, I, I, I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. And same with you, Chris?
Yes, I guess so. I think only in that I agree with you, Danu, that it's. If it puts too much on city staff to manage. Or to keep track of another. Board or subcommittee or. Yeah, but in this, definitely agree with the spirit of. Promoting pollinators.
Alrighty, great. Is anybody opposed? Okay, the motion passes to, uh, not approve the resolution as it is currently written. Okay, Melody? Do, do you have anything else you'd like to? Uh, chime in before I move on?
Nope, thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Melody. Okay, Tim, we have Creek Walk Art Walk update.
Yes, I've got some updates. Uh, first, um. Uh, Audrey, uh, from Crane, it had the wonderful idea that, uh, there may be funding from. URA. Since this is something that we are going to be locating primarily within Fields Park and I should add it. If this was a part of the update previously, that we. Took a look at, uh, how to use our funds through Conservation Trust and determined that this project needs to be. Within a park rather than say between parks on Creek Walk Trail, at least at this time, to comply with our funding. Uh, requirements. So, uh, we identified Fields Park as the best site for our initial project. And again, with URA being there, that may be something that, uh, we can get some additional funding. So Audrey is going to go to meet with URA, I believe. Tomorrow evening. And, uh, make an ask, uh, for some additional funding. As it stands right now. We have funding probably for three installments, possibly five depending on. How things fall out with, uh, pricing in terms of materials and construction. If URA funding comes in, that could get us, uh, to five, which would be, uh, fantastic. Uh, I met with Josh, uh, last week along with Mary Snyder and we walked through Fields Park. Rather than necessarily identifying specific, uh, potential sites to place art, it seems like there are many sites. Uh, our preference at this point is to try to have the art on the creek side. Um, and the request from Josh is that any locations would avoid, uh, encouraging people to congregate in say, uh, a relatively blind. Part of the, uh, the trail, uh, so that we don't have any, um, increased risk for collision. Uh, and then of course avoiding maybe existing things like existing art or sculpture or the disc golf, uh, baskets. But we have plenty of good sites. Uh, that said, if we, if there's movement forward on the parcel. Uh, opposite beckers from Fields Park, that would also be a tremendous site. Uh, to include art, especially to help get that face activated once that fence goes away. Uh, there's a lot of great opportunity there. Um, let's see, finally, we are. Still working to finalize but are close on. A design and construction, uh, contractor for the. Uh, install, um, installations. We will probably use the D eleven, uh, print shop. I had a meeting with, uh, a representative from them this week. And, uh, I think they'd be able to take care of all of our needs at a really, really good price. And, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Um, that should about do it. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, it's all Gray and it's all great. Um, I would just say that Audrey's last name is Gray.
Oh, thank you.
And she's with Crane?
Yes. Crane is all caps. And, and by the way, our hope is that this project is completed and installed by October one. Uh, which is actually very possible at this point. And October one is good because that will coincide with their, um. I probably have the name wrong, but Art Month. Any other questions?
So are, are you guys still leaning toward the trailhead signs?
So that's the design that we would like to follow, particularly with that grid pattern. Um, we would like to print the art on, uh, material called backs metal, which is similar to the, to a street sign. Which will be very, very durable, um, and then that would give us the opportunity to bolt those directly to that, um. That like mesh or grid that's in those. The challenge, we can't, we're not gonna be able to, to go exactly as those signs have been built because that original contractor is no longer in business. He's left Colorado.
Oh, too bad.
Yeah, it is too bad. He did a fantastic job on those, at a really good price too.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's the, the hope is that, that is where, is that it's going to be similar to the trailhead sign.
Is, is everybody fam- familiar with those trailhead signs? There's a, there's one up on the Inamen Trail off of Pawnee and, and then another one up on Spring Street. I think there's one over on the trailer that goes up the iron, Iron Mountain.
Yeah, there's one of the, there's one in the cemetery as well.
They're very cool. Yeah. So maybe, maybe we can find another fabricator.
Yeah, fortunately that, uh, that grid is actually an off-the-shelf product.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, maybe you guys should go talk to Glasser. Glasser Steel, they're the people that call our park fences.
Yeah, that, right. That grid is actually an off-the-shelf product. So it's just a matter of sourcing that and then, um, constructing the frame, uh, to go around it.
Yeah, yeah. I would, I would definitely try Glasser.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any questions for Tim? Alrighty, I think we're at the end of our agenda, y'all. So if, if, if anybody has anything else, speak now. And if not, then I would like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting for tonight.
I'll second that.
Alrighty, thank you, Tim. Alrighty, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep. Julian, I'll see you tomorrow. And anybody else who wants to join us? And, uh, if not, I'll see you all next month.
All right. See you tomorrow, Danu.
Alrighty, bye bye.
Danu, what time are you meeting tomorrow?
Ten o'clock, Chris.
Okay, I have to work, but.
Oh, bummer. Yeah. Well, we'll let you know. I mean, and, and it's good because I, I asked Manny to join us and so.
Good.
He's gonna join us up there so he can like fill, uh, Robin and Mia all in about all the elders, et cetera.
Yeah.
Tribes, et cetera.
Are any other Parab members going?
Uh, not that I know of.
Cool.
Yeah, so it's, it'll just be a site visit, just so that Mia and, and Robin can, you know, kind of look around and get another better idea.
Cool. Okay.
Alrighty.
I'll talk to you soon.
Okay, have a nice night.
You too. Bye.
All right. Bye bye.